Please, Ms. Van Zandt, will the police stand up?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment. Thank you, you may be seated. First up is the approval of an agenda, do we have a motion?
Moving to approve the agenda.
Motion's been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, ready for mission, Dr. Austin.
Any parents that want to take pictures feel free to come up forward if you want to get a picture with your kid.
The thing that we're doing, if you've not been here, this is Kingsport Times News, if you receive that newspaper, there is a drawing usually on each daily newspaper. And these are recognizing the students that submit these that are from Lee County. We have some tremendous artists. If you're not familiar with Board Docs, if you go to the Division website, go to School Board, go under Meetings, you can go to the meeting tonight and actually see the drawings. First up, we're going to talk about the Write On program where students actually submit writings. And first off, we're going to have from Elydale Elementary, Lee Cavan. I don't know who else we've got in the hall, how loud do I need to talk? Lee Cavan. Gracie Greer.
Had quite a few ballgames in that too.
Ava Hensley. Erin Horton. Carly Jones. Michaela Kidwell. Jackson Long. Chloe Markham. Sarah McPherson.
Yes, you'll come back up. Get a picture.
Dr. Metcalf, is Ms. Bergen out there? Isabella Rodriguez. Olivia Rodriguez. Amity Thacker. And Jaden Wilder. Again, on the Kingsport Times News Write On, from Pennington Middle, we have Tyson Bailey. Caitlin Brown. Abigail Edwards. Candace Ely. Cody Lane. Riley Muncy. Madison Sexton. Sydney Simpson. Emily Smith. Riley Woodard. And Chloe Young. For the drawing cards, again, Ms. Van Zandt had that up there with the drawings, from Elk knob Elementary, Jesse Crabtree. Ethan Grizzle. Abby Holloway. Clarence Pennington. Gianna Sicily. Congratulations. Lillian Williams. And Ally Wyman. From Flatwoods Elementary, we have Joanna Bledsoe. Aubrey Brown. Emma Clontz. Carolyn Robbins. From Jonesville Middle, we have Joshua Barber. Brayden Hammond. And Gabe Snodgrass. I think so is.
The Write On articles was to come up with other classes that you would like to see offered in the school system. Just wanted to say, we are going to be offering most, all of those classes.
Next, we've got some tremendous artists that represented us at the regional level for the City School Board Association Art Forum, which was held two weeks ago. Two weeks ago?
Yes.
So, these two individuals, two ladies, represented us well. We don't have their art with us this evening, but Alexa Stafford and Madeline Southern. Madeline with us. Again, tremendous artwork, and this is one of the things where we talk about, you know, investing in an elementary art program, the work that our teachers do, but then also that carries all the way through high school. And it's just amazing what these young people do with art. And I'm going to say the School Board's working to support that more, so congratulations. Thank you. Okay, next up, we've got our Teacher of the Year. And one of the things that I want to point out is that if you were familiar, Estelle represented us at the regional level last year as the Regional Teacher of the Year, did an incredible job. So, the plaque will say 2018 Teacher of the Year. We know it's 2017, but for the 1617 school year, this competition will be held in January of 2018. So, this is actually considered a 2018 award. So, what I'm going to do is read some names and bring up some teachers that have done an incredible job in all 11 of our schools. They do some incredible work with our students on a daily basis. They reach students where they are, and they are being recognized by their colleagues with this award. The Teacher of the Year for Dryden Elementary this year is Ms. Karen Williams. From Elk knob Elementary, we have Jamie Middleton. From Elydale Elementary, Renee Wilder. For Flatwoods Elementary, Gretta Carroll. From Jonesville Middle, Jill Graham. From the Career and Technical Center, Joe Williams. Head start, Dorothy Lincoln. From Lee High, Sue Ann Beals. Pennington Middle, Connie Burchard. From Rose Hill, Myra Carter. From St. Charles Elementary, Bambi Pendergrass. And from Thomas Walker, Adam Dean. And for perspective, these individuals are elected by their faculties, by their administration, and then those names are submitted to central office. We assemble a committee to decide who is our Teacher of the Year based on the information that's submitted to us. This year's Teacher of the Year that will go on to represent Lee County at the regional level is Ms. Karen Williams. And as you can see, he's been our School Board Chair, didn't know who the plaque was going to. So, Ms. Williams. Congratulations.
Yeah, we'll give everybody a meaning or so that wants to leave. I think that'll be all, recognition. All right, next up is public comment. If you have any public comments, it's time, we'll ask you to come forward, state your name, we'll give you five minutes to make your comments. Please don't confine anyone or call anybody's name.
My name is Sheriann, I was the drum major for the Lee High Band this year. As drum major, I worked closely with the new band director. I went into the season worried that we would have a poor season. I'm sure that if anyone else had been in the band, this season would have been a disaster. Change is always difficult, and it usually takes a couple of years for a band program to have its successful season after receiving a new director. However, we were provided with somebody efficient, organized, professional, and hardworking. From the very first day, he had our respect and made it clear that dedication was going to be required. He made himself approachable, and every single person felt comfortable enough to speak with him. His job was very difficult, practices were never over, and he had to make sure our band felt like a family. He had the responsibility to make unpopular decisions, and we were pushed to our limits this year because he saw our potential. We entered this season fearful of, but expecting failure. However, because of our new director, we were able to achieve a superior rating in both marching and concert band. This was such a drastic change compared to the mediocrity of previous years. Nobody who hears our director speak doubts his dedication and his love for music and for this band. He has done his job well beyond expectation, and nobody could replace him. The band will have immense difficulty following another director because of the standards he set for us and the love we have for him. Every decision he has made has been to better us as a band and as individuals. He has done so. With his help, we have begun to return Lee High Band to its former glory, and under his direction, we will once again be as good as gold. Not renewing his contract would destroy the band program he has worked so hard to restore. If you guys here have been touched by the band this year, will you please raise your hand? These are the people that have been affected by the band. These are the people that are going to be affected by our decision, so I think you should think of them to meet the law.
Hello, I'm Ryan Bowers, I'm from Lee High School, I'm a senior. Before I get started, I want everyone to know that I've never been in band, and I won't be able to because I'm a senior now. But this year, I have noticed that band is a whole lot better than it has ever been. Sophomore year and freshman year, I went to football games and pep rallies and stuff, and then I was like, why would I go? Everything's the same, you know? I really don't know anything about football, and I came from Union High School where they had a pretty good band program. Well, I come here and it's kind of the same. Well, this year, my friends invited me to a football game with them, and I kind of didn't want to go. Well, I went, and their, the band has just been so much better. It's went on, like, beyond my expectation for it. And some of my friends are in band, and before, I've noticed that everybody kind of argued and everything, and everybody just came together this year and worked together a whole lot better. And I have a little brother, and all he's ever talked about this year was, oh, I'm so excited to be in high school band next year, or I'm so excited to be in marching band, oh my gosh, the teacher knows my name, I'm so excited. And next year, if he's gone, it's going to crush him because that's all he's looked for all year. But it's not only for him, but all the other further students have been looking forward to. And if I had to go back and have it all over again, and he was my teacher for when I came, I would have totally picked it in a heartbeat. I'm just extremely excited about how good it has been going, and now it kind of hurts me that I know it could all go away now. And that's all.
Hello, my name is Sarah Schuler, and I'm a current sophomore at Lee High School, and a proud member of the Lee High Band. This is my second year as a marching general, and this year was far better than my first because of the dedication of the new band director. He has put in great amounts of time and effort into the improvement and success of every single student enrolled in band. At the beginning of this year, he was a stranger, and now he's a part of our band family. He related to us all until the trust was earned, and now that it has been earned, it will never be broken. He made us work hard, and he pushed us to our limits because he knew if we were never challenged, then we would never change, and we did. We went from zero trophies to a reserve grand champions and the title of a Virginia Honor Band for the first time in Lee High history. And I will forever be proud of that. He taught us to be better musicians and better people. He taught us to make goals and exceed them, and that is exactly what we did. And we continue to achieve more with the correct leadership. And it's my opinion and the opinion of my entire band family that we have found that leader.
My name is Caitlin Robbins, and I am a current junior at Lee High School. My first two years of marching band had been, I would want to say forgetful, but the only things that I did forget were every mean thing that ever happened. Until, until we got a new band director, this year. He changed things, and he made us actually look and think about what we say to others. Bullying is not okay. And he made us, he actually made us think, come out of our little childish shells that we sometimes have. When I became a Lee High Marching Grand General in freshman year, I was this awkward little and I didn't think that I would be up here right now talking. But here I am. And this year has been the best year of the Lee High Marching Band history for me. We have got, we have made history, we turned the tide around from last year to this year in just one month. We were dedicated to what we did, and we are also dedicated to the director we have now. Please don't take him away from us. We need so much more memories with him. Everyone needs some more memories with the band director at Lee High School. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Ozenberger, and I'm a freshman at Lee High School. I'm asking that you please reconsider not renewing the band director's contract. I love band, and I know that all the students here love it too. We have accomplished so much this year, and we're a first-time Virginia Honor Band. This director has done more for this program than any other director we've had. I want to be a band director one day, and I do not think I can do it without this year's director. I also want to get a scholarship for band, and if we're not good, then I don't get a scholarship. It's hard enough to get a decent education, let alone a scholarship. The School Board is supposed to do what's right for their students, and this isn't the right decision. Hiring him was supposed to give this program another chance, and without him, it's gone. So, please set us all else aside and look into the eyes of these students and tell them that they can have the best education as possible.
Good afternoon, my name is Chris Short, and I have all the others, and here to speak on behalf of the Lee High School Board of Your Bands. This school year has been by far the most fulfilling year of band that I've had out of the five that I've attended, and that is all thanks to the current band director. Over the past five years, I poured countless hours of my free time into practicing, helping set up for events, and organizing equipment, and this is the first year that I've ever felt like what I was doing was being appreciated. This is also the first time within this county that I've been able to say that I've done take first place in something. It lets me know that all the hard work that me and my friends pour into this program has actually paid off. Every single time that Andy stood and ever needed help, he was there to talk us along and give us the motivation to succeed, and he met any needs that we ever had. For instance, the band director understood that teaching the percussion section would be a difficult job due to him specializing in another instrument. So, instead of not helping us achieve our potential, or trying to, just to prove himself, he decided to hire a separate person to have sectionals with us every week, and that decision has paid off thoroughly. This is the first time that I've been a part of a percussion section that has received an overall first-place trophy at any of the competitions I've been to. Last year, our marching percussion was graded at a 76. However, this year, we received a 91. And after this, after his first year, and I cannot wait to thank, I cannot thank him enough for opening that door for us and helping me realize what I want to do with my band. He has done so much more than the job that he was set out to do. He has ended bullying within the band, he has organized everything in such a systematic manner, and he has brought us all closer together through proper teachings, a strong work ethic, and a relaxed kindness. He is always overwhelmingly positive, and we believe he's the driving force behind all of us. He's constantly set expectations high, and we have reached them every single time. Like next year, we had planned on taking the band to the United States Band of America Competition, which would be an amazing experience for all of us to have, and without Mr. Aker as the president, oh, Jesus. Without Mr. Aker, without the current band director, we wouldn't just go, and we would live for ourselves. It would be a horrendous waste of all people's heart, and it is something that we really, really are passionate about and want him to continue doing his job. He's amazing at his job, and he has done everything down to a point where it shouldn't be done. He has done well by us, and he has done well by the things that we want. And everything that we need has been there. He, along with the rest of us, will always remain as a family regardless of the decision made, and we just implore you so, so much that please make the decision that we'd like.
Hello, my name is Will McQueen, and I'm a sophomore at Lee High. Earlier this year, I stopped playing football, a sport that I loved and planned to play for the rest of my high school career, to take a chance on being in band. A decision that I was very unsure about at the time, but soon became very clear to me that the new band director at Lee High had helped me solidify this decision. He has resparked an interest in music that I didn't know I had. He has helped me learn more in this year than I ever have in any other year in band. He helped me find the confidence in myself and the willingness to succeed, and he has done this in all of us. He has given us the ability to accomplish everything we have this year, going from what I would consider an average band to a almost excellent band. It takes a great leader to bring out everything to succeed in all of us, and he has done this. He told us at the beginning of the year, he asked us if we wanted to succeed, and we all said yes. And he has given me that advice, and I have complied it every day since he's given it to us. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sidney Himes, I am a sophomore at Lee High School, and I have been in the band for four years, and I am also a major rep. This year, by far, for the Lee High Band, has been the best for this band since our previous, previous, previous band director. Our band director has taken us from nothing to something. Our music has greatly improved from where it was to where it is now. We sound, we do not sound very good, what are you doing? He has an entire list of accomplishments. He set a list at the beginning of the year that he wanted us to achieve, and he achieved everything on that list. We became a Virginia Honors Band. We went first, the first band to go on at the Marching State Assessment. And he told us that rarely ever does a band get first place when they're the first band that goes. Well, we did. We got first place, and then went on to get a Superior in Concert Assessment, which made us become a Virginia Honors Band. In the past few years, the Lee High Marching Band has plummeted. We would go to band camp, and we would lose a good fourth of the members in that first day. And I believe with our, with our new band director, that this program can be brought back from what it was to something great. As he has already proved, we have the potential, sorry, to do it, and he has brought that potential forward. It would be a complete and utter devastation to remove him from band director. It really would. He has, like I've said, an entire list of accomplishments. He's done nothing but great for this greatness, achieved greatness, words. And if he was to be removed, it would, the band program would probably crash in bombs, to tell you the truth. Really, he has done amazing with the work he has done, and it would not be a very wise decision to remove him from this. We love our band director, and he has become part of our family. In band, we are one giant family, and he has become the leader of our large family. Just please, think about the students. Think about what we say, what we have said, think about what he has accomplished, and just think about how much we care about him and how much he means to us. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kate Bowles. The Lee High Band has made some astounding accomplishments this past year. These accomplishments would not have been possible if it were not for the amazing hard work and support from the Lee High Band Director. The band director took an average band and made them into a hard-working, dedicated family. That band became the first Virginia Honor Band in Lee High history, and also winning reserve grand champions at the McChesney Band Competition, along with getting all first-place trophies at the Y Central Band Competition. These are just a few of the astounding achievements that the Lee High Band Director has helped us receive. We would love to keep going and getting these accomplishments, especially since the Lee High Band is going to Bands of America Competition this year. We all agree that we need the current Lee High Band Director so that the band can do well at this competition. at this competition, especially with a more difficult arrangement of music. We need the Lehigh Band Director so we can accomplish the harder music and do even better than this year. Not only has the Lehigh Band Director helped the band as a whole with problems, but would help us as with our own individual problems and would give us encouragement when things aren't going so well. The director also handles class disruptions and a calm, kind man without yelling and I believe this helps with overall morale of the band itself. And if the band is happy and in high spirit, the band can do a lot more things efficiently and effectively. This past year, the band director helped me personally when I switched to French horn by giving me lots of support and encouragement, by helping me with the basics to French horn and the director even decided to take time away from his own time to stay after school to give me lessons so that I would be able to play French horn well. And not only did he help me personally, but he helped the whole band. And we will need the continuous support and encouragement for our show that will be, have hard music and I do not think that we can do this music without the help of the Lehigh Band Director. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kate Bowles. And the Lehigh Band has achieved many great accomplishments since our new band director has came to our school. I feel he has helped our band in many great ways and we are in better shape with him than the other, than any other years, uh, of any other years that I've been at Lehigh. I also don't want any other school to have what we have with our band director. I do not want him to leave because he has opened up so many great doors for our band and I don't want that to go. Our band director has helped us achieve great things this year, which have started to rebuild the Lehigh Band reputation and I don't want that reputation to fall back down to the bottom again with a new director. Our band director has also helped all of the students in the band and treats them with great respect and the students treat them with respect back. Their respective work and I think he does a great job at being our Lehigh School Band Director because he works with every student and knows how to help them and help their playing problems and how to better them and help them to play to their full potential. The current Lehigh Band Director has also opened up many awards for scholarship opportunities in our band program and I don't want that to go because I want a chance to get a band scholarship. I also feel that the band director has improved the overall captive view of our band to a more positive view since we had such a successful year, just like achieving Virginia honor band and winning the reserve grand champion at the McChesney Competition back in the fall. He has also improved the overall morale of the band because we think we are able to play better now because he has improved our level of playing.
Ma'am, before you start, will you put my back up so we don't do that in play? I don't think that's appropriate. There you go, thank you.
Hello, I'm Chastity Charplee. I'm currently a color guard and flute player, member of the Lehigh Band. I have been in band for several years and I have had six different band directors in my past, but the difference between all the other band directors and the current band director is that he is hardworking, energetic, trust me, and very dedicated to our band. Like I said previously, I'm a part of the color guard. In the past, the color guard has been pushed away from the band, like we are not as important. But our band director has expressed that we are all one family and we are all equal, which is very new to me. It is devastating to see that once our band was broken, unfaceable, uninspired, and the worst in the area, then he walked in and in only three months takes our band to go and accept the honor of being a Virginia honors band, pushed us to become grand champs at many competitions and to accept many other trophies, yet some people are willing to not renew his contract. This action would demolish our music program. We have come so far beyond what I ever thought I could ever imagine being capable of. Our band director has done so many remarkable things for our band in the music department. He has done more than just his job. He has made such a huge impact on my life and the way that I view music. If any person was to sit in our classroom for as little as fifty minutes, only one class period, you could see that he has a love for music and for each and every one of the students. If you guys were willing to follow through with the decision to not renew his contract, the fault of our music department experiencing full destruction would be on your hands.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Spock. I'm a member of the Lehigh Band. I can't thank my band director enough. Really, all that comes to mind right now is thanking him for the opportunity of being the best person, the best director a person asks for. He's taken us from an ordinary to an extraordinary band and let me put emphasis on extra. He's done so many extra things for us, so many extra things that makes us the best band that we can be. We are a family now. It's not just everyone caring about themselves anymore. I believe once you master the art of facing a roomful of teenagers and come out alive, you can pretty much do anything and he conquers that about every day. He's done so much for this band and we really all can't thank him enough for that. But I'll close with this. There's a quote on my biology teacher's desk that says, "To teach is to touch one's life forever." My director has taught me what it means to be a real band member, what it means to be later, a hard worker and a friend. And for that, I thank him.
Hello, members of the Lehigh County School Board. My name is Miranda Howard. I am currently a ninth grade student at Lehigh High School and a member of the Virginia Lehigh Honor Band. Almost all of my family has had something to do with this wonderful program, whether that be marching and playing an instrument or working in the concession stand raising money for the program, myself included. I have seen and went through what this band was and what it is now. The band director at Lehigh has done so many amazing things this school year for not just one student, but all of the band students. He has taught and shown us the true meaning of hard work. Yes, we may have stumbled a few times, but who hasn't? We all make mistakes. Not one of us here or in the world is perfect, by no means whatsoever. Despite those mistakes, we learn to get right back up again and carry on. I have always had a love for music, but not until I met this band director have I realized that music is my true calling in life. Music is what I am truly passionate about. He saw that in me and decided to show me more and even find me a private clarinet instructor to further my views and abilities. But I am not the only one who he has helped and cared for. He cares for all of us and always lets us shine like the stars we are when we work hard to achieve it. We are one band, one sound, and without this wonderful teacher to guide us, I don't know where we would end up, but I know it would not be forward, but instead backwards. Please hear all of our words here and take your sweet time to make the right decision. All these people here are for this wonderful man behind me. I just thank you for your, thank you for your time. Please, please hear us.
Good evening, Dr. Austin and distinguished members of the Lehigh County School Board. My name is Shane Barnum and I'm speaking for the autistic students in Lehigh County. I myself am autistic. I have a form of autism called Asperger's Syndrome, which is why these students have a special place in my heart. It is estimated that one in every sixty-eight people are born with autism spectrum disorder. Students with autism spectrum disorders are either high-functioning with an IQ of higher than eighty or low-functioning with an IQ of lower than eighty. Autistic students with low-functioning autism are often mentally retarded and socially and linguistically deficient. Although great strides have been made to help students who have low-functioning autism, more can be done. I believe that sensory rooms in our classrooms and schools can make a noticeable improvement in these students who have low-functioning autism. What is a sensory room? A sensory room is a room that is used to help students with limited communication skills in developing their senses. Sensory rooms can have a variety of interactive stimuli that engage students in a positive, safe environment. Research has shown that sensory rooms benefit a variety of special needs students, including those with low-functioning autism. Among the benefits of sensory rooms are increased concentration and increased attention, heightened awareness and improved alertness, increased brain function leading to cognitive development, and lowered aggressive behaviors. I propose that you consider placing sensory rooms in our schools. I believe that sensory rooms can do wonders for our students who are on the autism spectrum, especially those who are at the low-functioning level. I thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Julia Heron. I'm probably nobody to you. I'm not a resident of Virginia at all, I live in Kentucky, but I do hear a lot because I'm involved in a lot of things. I'm here because frankly, and there's no nice way to put it, I'm just a little outraged and mostly bewildered to learn that you've decided not to renew the current band director's contract for the upcoming school year. I have worked closely with these students, all of them, since July of last year. I'm a color guard instructor, but I work with all of them, no matter what section they're in. And like I said, I've worked closely with them since July of last year. I've watched them grow and learn so much under the current director. Everything that they're saying is true. I watched them become a family. The first week, he did tell them the first day and I know because I wrote it down on my binder, he told them, he actually had them make a list of what they wanted to achieve and he asked them if they wanted to be successful and I wrote down that they said yes, so that when they started to complain, "It's too hot" or "I'm tired" or "I don't want to practice today," we could go back and say, "You, this is what you wanted." It's not what he wanted, it's what they wanted. They came up with this list and they achieved everything on that list. I've seen them build skills, not only in music, but in their own characters as well. I see these kids every week. I'm here every Wednesday as the color guard instructor and I'm there for band class every Wednesday and each week I am blown away by how much they've improved from the week before. And this isn't just me talking, I'm not writing a Hallmark card, I'm saying that honestly, blown away by how much they've improved from the week before. I make sound clips of them playing each week because usually they're working for a performance, whether it's a parade, a competition, football games, basketball games, concerts, which I'm sure you've heard them as well at these events. And I make a sound clip and I compare it to what they're doing that day and it's, it's amazing. If you haven't heard it, you need to attend one of those events so you can see it for yourself. And I see the response from the community. I've seen middle school parents who don't know this person, don't know this instructor at all, their students aren't one of his students. I've seen them approach him after performances pleading for him to stay with the program until their kids finish middle school and can be in that program as well. I don't know if any of them are here because I don't know their names, but they want their children to be under his successful instruction and it has been successful. There's no denying that you've received a list from the kids, obviously, superior rating at marching assessment, superior rating at concert assessment, to receive the title of Virginia, uh, Virginia Honor Band. For the first time in school history, that speaks volumes and there's no denying that you can't be blind to the, that fact or any of his other, the kids' accomplishments. They're not his accomplishments, they're the kids', but it's under his successful instruction. So I feel that there are no evident honest reasons for non-renewal of his contract. So like I said, I know that I'm nobody to any of you, I don't vote for you to have your job, so, but I, I mean, it's very important to me. I closed the practice and flew over here from Kentucky just to make it to this meeting and I hope that it doesn't fall on deaf ears when I plead for you to very carefully reconsider your decision as a board and renew the current band director's contract. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Irene Eadley and I am not here to degrade the band. I think Lehigh has always had a wonderful band, nor am I here to degrade their director. I have never met him, nor do I even know his name. Apparently, he does, he's made a great impression on these children because I've been sitting here listening to what they have to say. But I'm here because I am a mother of a major rep and there's a couple of things I'd like to address. Number one, I don't even have a child in Lehigh High School. My daughter is only ten years old. Let me tell you what she's accomplished at the age of ten because of the help of Ms. Shelley and this major rep program. She, with the help of Shelley and what Shelley has taught her, she came up with a routine on her own and in last November, she competed in her school competition, a 4-H competition at Montauk Elementary and she won first place. She went on in December, or January, December or January, to the county competition at Lehigh High School between all the schools, doing her routine that she performed and she won first place. She went last week to the area competition, which was between Lee, Scott, and Wise and she represented our county very well. She won championship doing her major rep routine. Now, I'd like to address a couple of comments the children have made that made perfect sense to me. The young lady right back here, she mentioned the scholarship and you are exactly right. Anything that these children want to do, they should be supported in, especially if they want to do this thing and, and they're good at it and they have a chance at furthering their future by getting scholarships to do this. But why would you want to take away the chance of my daughter? Because there are colleges who use these major reps to this day and my daughter is good enough at the age of ten, but I feel like when she gets in high school and she's able to continue this program, she may have a chance at a scholarship also. So a chance at her future shouldn't be taken away because someone doesn't like a major rep. Also, I've heard these children say that their band director has brought them together and taught them how to just come together as a family. You have major reps in your band, so do you, what do you, do you just outcast them? Are they just an outcast? I mean?
Nope. We are not outcast.
Right, exactly. So they're, they're, they're part of your family also. That, yeah, that, that, they're part of your family also. My daughter loves performing. She takes time away from softball, she takes some time away from cheerleading to perform and she loves performing. So I have nothing against this band director, like I said, I've never met him, except for the fact that it's my understanding that we want to do well with major reps. And just like with these children, you know, if they want to blow a horn and they're happy doing, they're good at it, they should be allowed to do that. But if they want to twirl a baton and they're happy doing it and they're good at it, they should have the opportunity to do that and we should not create separation in these children. They should be brought together. So thank you very much.
Hello, my name is James Riddings. I've been in Lehigh Band for two years of mine. Last year, I didn't enjoy it. We didn't do anything with music. Last year's director, frankly, just said poofy on it and let it go. I'm not saying that to be funny and I'm not saying that to make a joke at anybody, not at all, but this director that we have now took what he was throwing away. He was throwing in a ground and stomping on it and brought it back to something that we can use to bring not only happiness with just people around us here, but also bring people in here. We have something here now. The coal, since the coal mine industry's left, we lost everything and you all know that as much as I do. And some of my grandparents were working with the coal mine industry and when that shut down, we lost everything. But if a music industry was to come back and something was to start booming from here, we can bring this place- we can bring this place back to something that it used to be. This director, I'm not saying he's going to change the world, but he can change the band for sure. He can bring us back. He can bring something back here. We have nothing at this moment, and I would love to keep him and keep going on our journey to a higher somewhere.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for giving me a moment of your time, and please excuse how I look. I just now got off the bus from the zoo at Oxford with Ms. Bales. So, my name is Allison Cochrane, and I'm a senior at Lehigh School. I'm currently a major rep in the Lehigh Marching Band, and have been a band member since I started in middle school at this time. Some of you may not know this, but I've not always been a major rep in the band. There was a time when I wore the white pants and what I like to call a chicken hat and played my clarinet on the field. Given the fact that I've twirled a baton since the age of two, the transition from an instrument player to a major rep my sophomore year made me love the band even more, and my feelings towards being a major rep of the band, towards being a member of the band became even stronger. Being a part of the Lehigh Band has been one of the best, if not the best, experiences of high school for me. Being in the band has taught me teamwork, leadership skills, given me friendships and memories that will last a lifetime. Thanks to many special people, including my band family, I'm a graduating senior, furthering my education at Emory and Henry College, and receiving a scholarship to continue my twirling career in the marching band. I have worked many years, even before high school, towards a position like this for myself, and I never thought I could say I would be a college major rep, but here I am. I know there are many indifferent feelings between the band and the major rep section right now, and I know there has been before, but as many of us know, being in the band means being a family, and without the support of this family, I cannot be where I am today. I'm not the first major rep from Lehigh to receive a scholarship to continue twirling in college, but I can only hope I won't be the last. It's hard to believe that in just a few days I'll be in alumni, and my band days in high school will end, but my hope for the future of Lehigh's band is that they will grow a strong bond together, not just to be individual sections from major reps, flutes, percussion, but everybody, so that everyone can be in unity together. And again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I'll end in saying that we are...
Thank you.
First off, let me say, the band is not easy. It's hardworking, time-consuming, and it takes immense dedication. However, millions of individuals play, march, and perform every year. Band is an activity, you volunteer, you voluntarily spend hours in uncomfortable heat, giving blood, sweat, and tears to perfect our art. It seems like a lot of work for only a few minutes, and that can only, that can only, that can often go unappreciated. How many people do this? Here are the band kids. These people you see in front of us. I don't know if you... This past year has been better than the two past years that I have been a marching general. We have actually gotten trophies. It's a big surprise to us, too. We were fourth of the point from grand champion. We are the first Virginia honors band in Lehigh history, and it is all because of the foundation that this band marches on. It is our record. Now, it takes, it usually takes months for a band program, it takes years even, for a band program to be built up the way it is. My band director has built this up, but it only took us a few months. Please consider us, consider our words, consider that we showed up here. My favorite quote is on the Kentucky flag. United we stand, but divided we fall. As a band, as a family, section by section, detail by detail, major reps, color guard, instrumentalists, drum majors, we stand together before you, and our future lies in your hands. But we ask you to look at this, not politically, but consider us, consider the words you heard here today. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shay Schuler, and I'm a mother of two proud marching generals. I'm not going to stand up here and plead our case to you guys anymore, we've been really long-winded. I'm sure it was easy to get distracted, but not all these kids wanted to get up and stand in front of you, so really quickly I want to show you something. All you band kids, will you stand up, please, real quick? Any of you who have worked with children in school system know how hard it is to get a new major to turn over, much like show up. Look at these faces, they're here for this man. Please don't take them away from us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a board? Sorry, I'm sorry. If not, we move to consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the following items: Approval of minutes from the April 11, 2017 regular meeting; Approval of claims and expenditures; Field trips; CTC skills USA students to national competition in Louisville, Kentucky; and FFA agricultural students from CTC, Jonesville Middle, and Thomas Walker High School to Virginia Tech for state competition.
Motion's been made, do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is report to the board. Do we have any reports of the board? If not, next reports of the division superintendent, Dr. Austin.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, first of all, I want to brief you on enrollment updates as of the end of April. As you can see from the document that Ms. Bales is bringing up on the screen, attendance last month was a little under what we had budgeted, 3,028.05. The good news on that is if you look back at the March membership, that's what we actually are funded on, but enrollment continued to decline a little bit. But again, our budget was not impacted by that, but it's just something that we're continuing to monitor. Also, one of the things I want to point out is attendance was up last month, which is a good thing for the month of April. The next thing is the schools with the highest percentage of attendance, this is one of the areas that we have continued to focus on throughout the year, but want to recognize Dryden Elementary was in second last month, and Pennington Mill were being first place. We will be providing that trophy to Ms. Collier and her staff, appreciate the efforts of the staff, as well as parents and students for, again, 94% attendance for that month, which is impressive. Next up, update on the operational hours for the summer. We polled staff, the results of the poll are available online. A little more than 93% of the staff who responded, which was a total of 45 responses, chose to go with 14-hour days over the summer as opposed to five eight-hour days. What you see there on the screen will be the operational hours at each building, as well as the operations, which is the bus garage and here the school board office. You'll notice school board office hours are six to five. We have varied staff here, someone works six to four, and one someone works seven to five, so we will be available from six to five. Somebody in the building will be available, so I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. Next up, operations update.
What was the numbers at the end of March and the end of April? Did you say attendance was up?
Enrollment is down, but attendance is in the attendance rate.
Oh, just attendance, okay, not enrollment.
Yes, like the 94.3% from Pennington. The average of the membership was down, but attendance...
Down four.
Yes. Well, 3.03 or whatever that is. Any other questions? Sorry, I thought those two were too quick. Okay, going back to operations update, I'm not going to read this to you, but it's available. You can see what our maintenance staff works on in each building. Our staff, as well as our custodians, do a great job of keeping up with buildings on a regular basis. As you're aware, we're continuing to evaluate roofs, structures, as part of just our regular operations, also putting out a request for proposals for that based on the recommendations of the board last month. And also, we'll continue to work on facilities, study more information to come on that. And then the last item is, it's a summer school, this is an FYI, summer school in the extended school year will run from May 29 through June 15. This will be Monday through Thursday, hours from 8 to 2 of Lehigh and Thomas Walker. Got details on there, students who may attend summer school who are seeking credit recovery, want to take a class again to improve a grade, and then also if they want to earn initial credit that is anything other than government or English 12. So if students want to come in and have access to other programs, they can do that. So again, details will be available at the high schools, but that will run again, May 29 through June 15, Monday through Thursday, just like our...
15 or 16?
15. I think that's a Thursday.
16.
Let's see. I've got it.
16.
Okay. Oh, okay, in the notes, it's going to make 15, sorry, in the heading, it's making 16, it's the 15. The 15 is a Thursday. Yes, the heading has the 16, you're correct, sorry. Down in the notes, June 15. Okay, back to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, next, unfinished business, action if any to approve the purchase of communication devices for all vehicles and schools.
I make a motion that we take from the table, action if any to approve the purchase of communication devices for all vehicles and schools.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
No.
Aye. Any opposed?
This is taken from the table. This is taken from the table. I make a motion, actually, you want to make a comment first?
Clear the set, pretty much. It's a music...
Okay, so it's back up. If you look at the information, this was something that was brought before the board at the March 23 meeting to invest in communication devices for buses. The cost has since gone up, I will say, almost by 50%. At this point, administration is not recommending this purchase due to the cost increase. Perhaps at some point there will be a promotion or something else that we might be able to access. And again, this has been tabled from the March 23 meeting. Wanted to bring it back to your attention, so that way you knew that it was continuing to be something that administration was investigating, but again, not something we recommend at this point.
I make a motion that we accept the superintendent's motion not to purchase communication devices for all vehicles and schools due to the quite exorbitant price increase.
I second.
Motion's been made, do we have a second? Do we have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is final review, and action if any to approve the updated school board policy IA-8 BL reporting of student progress.
This was an update to a school board policy that was shown as first reviewed last month. This is something that from administration, as well as feedback from teachers, we've had a mixed bag, but the majority agree. If you look, this would change our grading scales throughout Lehigh County, Ms. Van Zandt, if you can scroll down a little bit, to a 10-point grading scale. And as you can see, this changes how grades would be assessed from just an A to an A+ and A-, a B+, a B-, so that this recognizes students' efforts more consistently. And again, from a 10-point grading scale, makes As, Bs, Cs a clean cutoff. Administration recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion's been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. On the As there, particularly A+ and A, that there's no differentiation in the 4.0 wise there?
If you look at how it's been scaled before, we don't have weighted grades. I know that's something that previous administrations of boards have done, has had weighted grades. That can be something that's brought up for discussion later, but at this point, maintaining a four for an A or an A+ would be what we would recommend. At some point, we may look at weighted grades for dual enrollment classes, possibly AP, but that can be something that we discuss as we go along throughout the next school.
Any more discussion? Motion's been made, do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, action, discussion items, action if any to approve the FYI 18 salary scales.
These are salary scales that were approved at the March 30 public input meeting for the budget for FY18. The changes here are the assistant principal would continue to be a 10 and 1/2 position. There's a couple of, I will say, editorial changes that were added, I will say, the other change is substitute pay, changing it from $60 for degreed substitutes to 75, and then also for non-degreed substitutes from 55 to 60, so increasing those rates to make Lehigh County more competitive in the region with substitutes. The other salary increases are the 1% that was approved at the, again, as part of the FY18 budget, and if Ms. Van Zandt, if you scroll back up to the teachers, we'll use that as an example. You can see the 1% from a zero step this year to a person being on step one, this is reflective of that individual having a year of experience, but you'll see the difference in the pay is 1%. So that this is reflective of that change. And what was presented in March 30 was intended to be a two-page document for teachers, but actually, it was a one-page is what was presented in step 30, and some of the language at the bottom was left off, that's been corrected in this, so administration recommends approval.
I make a motion that we approve the physical year 18 salary scales.
I'll second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, action if any to approve the 2017-18 Special Education Annual Plan.
Dr. Austin. This was presented by Ms. Spivey and Mr. Dean as our plan for providing special education services to students next year. This is something that has presented, it provides some general overarching details, but not a whole lot of specifics, because each IEP is, of course, individualized. So with that being said, administration recommends approval.
I make a motion that we approve the 2017-18 Special Education Annual Plan.
Motion's been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, action if any to approve disposal of surplus property, per school board policy DEN, disposal of surplus items.
As administration continues to go through items that have been purchased in the past and stored, we are continuing to find items that we are disposing of, and if you go to the division webpage, you go down, there's a website called GovDeals, and all of this is being auctioned publicly. These are additional items that help us reduce inventory, as well as get rid of items that we're no longer using, so administration recommends approval. Do we have a motion?
I have a question. How often is that updated? Is that put on there for people to look at? Is there a...
After the school board approves. If you approve certain items, then we update it.
So is that even that?
Yes, ma'am. And typically what happens is it's posted on Friday or Monday, Monday at the latest after school board meetings, and I think it's seven to 10 days is how long the bids are up. You'd have to look at each individual auction, but typically those are disposed of and picked up before the next quarter. Let me rephrase that, dispose of, paid for, and picked up. Stick that. Is it an in-bay type auction? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's a public auction site for public entities such as school boards and counties.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve disposal of surplus property SBN, D E N on disposal of surplus items.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, item D, action if any to approve the Virginia School Board Association Policy Update SBJHC, school meals and snacks.
If you look at this policy, this is a policy that's updated through the Virginia School Board Association as part of the contract we have with them for policy services. Ms. Van Zandt, if you scroll down, the items that were added by policy services are a section dealing with unpaid meal charges. And this is something that, again, keeps us in compliance with Code of Virginia. There were some items in here, if you scroll back up, Ms. Van Zandt. In that section, that's the underline, that's the added portion of it, there were some items in there that administratively we needed to fill in. For example, the dollar amounts and the number of days between. Everything else is, again, code compliant, and administration recommends approval.
Can we hear a motion? I'll make the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item E, action if any to approve school board policy JHCH-BR, adult meal charges.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is a policy that would be a board regulation, and this addresses charges for adults who come through the line. This is something that happens on a fairly regular basis. This policy would say that that's not a common practice that is endorsed by administration. But if there are extenuating circumstances, then that could be handled through cafeteria manager and principal, but the balance would need to be paid within three business days. So this is establishing a policy and a procedure to make that process more clear for all staff. And both that and the previous policy will be communicated to parents and staff in the coming months as we get ready for August ninth, which is the start of the next school year.
I understand we've carried some, some bills year to year.
Yes, sir.
Not gotten paid year to year.
And pretty substantial. For adults, yes, sir. This helps address that issue.
Three days, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not cutting out if they're able to charge. It's just when they do charge, they have three days to pay their bill.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
I make a motion.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, item F, action if any to issue report, or I'm sorry, request for proposal for speech therapy services, physical therapy services, and hearing services.
I make a motion that a request for proposal be issued for speech therapy services, physical therapy services, and hearing services.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
I have a question on this. How does that come about? Do the people inform that they can?
Yes, ma'am. We will advertise it in the Power Valley News, Kingsport Times, and then also post it on a website that's called Eva, Eva Virginia. What that does is that goes out to a number of vendors, not only Commonwealth, but also in Compton, Kentucky, Tennessee. It goes into other vendors that do business in Virginia.
Strictly by lowest bid, or do you take those things into fact?
A request for proposals, with your permission, we can continue, we can consider other factors than just low bid. References, low bid, service, that comes into play with a request.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is action if any to approve a change to the employee health insurance provided by.
Administration met with the Health Insurance Committee as well as with our insurance consultant, and on March second, the Insurance Committee agreed with the recommendation of administration to offer two additional health insurance plans to employees next year. As you're aware, at the March thirtieth board meeting, when we approved, when you approved the fiscal year eighteen budget, we were not passing along any cost increase related to health insurance to employees. So the cost that they pay would be maintained again this year, even though our rates are going up almost twelve percent. So that's going to be a cost that the school board picks up. In addition to that, one of the things that we wanted to make is a viable option to employees is a reduced cost per month. And if you look at this, there are two other options. The first column is the current rates. The second column would be next year's rates. And then the third column would be a plan that has a thousand-dollar deductible. Our current plan, and I'm talking single subscriber for employee only, has no deductible and the employee pays approximately a hundred thirty-seven dollars a month. For the one thousand-dollar deductible, I can't read that number from here. Is it seventy-eight off the top of my head? You can see what the fee is. It would be almost seventy-eight dollars a month, which is reduced. But again, an employee would have a deductible as opposed to a copay. And this is not something that would be forced on employees. This would be something that would be handled through administration in cooperation with Mark III to help employees make informed decisions about healthcare. And the last column is a health savings account. You'll notice that this would take the employee to no cost for health insurance, but there would be a three thousand-dollar deductible. Now, to offset that three thousand-dollar deductible, administration is recommending incentivizing this by paying a hundred dollars a month for employees who choose this option, and with that would be put directly in a health savings account. That's what an HSA stands for. Again, this is something that would be optional to employees. We are not mandating one or the other. If employees don't change their current plan, they would stay with the second column, which is, again, whatever's being paid by that employee depending on the plan that they choose. Anywhere from a hundred thirty-seven dollars for an individual up to almost nine hundred and sixty-four dollars for a family. So again, with some changes in deductibles, there could be a reduced cost per month for employees who may make more money. Administration recommends this, again, as an option for employees. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I make a motion to approve a change to the employee health insurance provided by.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to follow up on what Dr. Austin was talking about with health savings account. If you're a, if you're an employee-only plan, you pay nothing, and we'll pay you a hundred dollars a month to put towards your HSA account, which is your money. It's like your own, it's like your health IRA, like a savings account. And you, there's a limit on how much an employee in the school system could put in that account for a year. But what happens is once you meet your deductible, I guess they call it a deductible under that plan, but once you meet that, it's just, it's really an attractive plan as far as your healthcare. So I think it's a scary thing. Unfortunately, it's late in the school year. I'm not sure there's sufficient time to get out of the schools and explain HSA to the teachers and the employees. But I think once that people investigate it and maybe talk to some of those that will take advantage of an HSA, I think it'll become more of an attractive option for the employees in the school system. I think everybody should talk to your financial advisor or your healthcare advisor or whatever, and really look at that option because it can be really a good thing for you, and you can actually end up with some money years down the road from taking advantage of that program. So keep that in mind, please.
It seems too good to be true, but it is legit.
I think David Raw for serving on that committee. He's right. Healthcare is a scary thing for, for everybody, I think, nationwide at this point, but he's a. Go ahead.
The other thing Dr. Austin mentioned is this is the second year in a row that we've made a decision as a board to not pass along the increase in healthcare costs to our employees, and it's expensive, I think.
Last year was a seven percent increase.
Yeah. And what's the dollar amount this year, Dr. Austin?
Three hundred and sixty thousand. I don't have that exact dollar amount.
Three seventy, whatever. So we're not passing that along. I don't know if we continue to do that years down the road or whatever, but we're trying to help. We don't want to give people a raise, a raise their health insurance, and they don't end up with a raise. So I hope the employees will appreciate that and hopefully will do that in future also.
Any other discussion? Motion's been made with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is action if any to amend and approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen school calendar.
Administration in cooperation with the county, when the school calendar was approved for next school year, had proposed September fifteenth be a teacher in-service day because at that point, the RAM event was going to be held on September sixteenth. Since then, we have scheduled a football game on September fifteenth, which means the RAM event would have to be moved to the twenty-third. So administration is recommending changing September fifteenth from being a teacher in-service day to moving that until September twenty-second. This is something that will be communicated on the website. We make sure that we get that out on Facebook as well as Twitter if you approve that change. But administration recommends approval.
We have a motion on item H.
I make a motion to amend the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school calendar.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is board comments. Do we have any board comments?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Since this is Teacher Appreciation Week, I just want to express my appreciation to you teachers for your hard work and dedication to the students of Lee County, and congratulate, and I also want to congratulate those that were selected as Teacher of the Year at their various schools and for the district.
Couple of things. First of all, I want to say that you know, very impressive presentation been made here tonight on behalf of the issue with the band director. I'm old now, but it gives me hope for the future that we got these kids that come in here and are well-spoken and well-reasoning what they have put before the board, and so it speaks well for our future. And I hope all of you all graduate high school and then stay in Lee County. We need you to stay here. But you were really impressive, so the board, you know, ultimately in the end, the board has to go in back and vote on what we're going to do with this situation. I can't sit here and tell you that I know what that vote's going to be, but it will be well-reasoned and well-thought. There'll be full discussion, and we'll see how that vote comes out. And I do want to say I thank you all for being here. Also, I want to congratulate the teachers that were here earlier that have been considered for Teacher of the Year. And also wanted to mention that we had a person that passed away in the last couple of weeks, Joe Smitty, Papa Joe Smitty, as people know him. And he was the first chancellor of UVA Wise. He's Will's grandfather. And he was a principal at Jonesville High School, which I didn't know till I read in the paper. He was a principal of my beloved Jonesville High School, and knew him and his wife, and they were always very cordial. And he had a tremendous impact on this part of the country through his stewardship of UVA Wise, Clinch Valley at that time. And so I wanted to offer my condolences to your family.
Thank you, Austin. Certainly appreciate that.
And I'm very impressed at the turnout of the young people, and I listen to each and every one of you. You know, the young gentleman, if he's still here, talked about coal mines closing and what that did to Lee County. We all know that there's not a whole lot in Lee County for young people to do. And if we take things away out of our school, anything, if there's one thing you take away from a kid that that child can no longer do, that child's going to find something else to do, and a lot of times that something else is not a positive thing. So we all need to think about, you know, maybe you don't play an instrument, that don't mean that you're not a band member. And, you know, when, sometimes when things get divided, it's hard to put them back together. But I've always said that small-town people can come together quicker than big-town people. So, you know, we need, we need to learn to put things behind us and to think about other people's feelings and other people's love for things, you know. Not everybody has the love for music. Doesn't mean that they don't like it. They just don't fully understand it, you know. But, and not everybody understands a baton twirler, you know. Not everybody understands a cheerleader, but you've got to respect that, and you've got to understand that people have different interests and different, different love. So you, you've got to think, what if that was me, that that was being proposed to take away? And I will never agree to take away anything from a child. There's one reason I ran for Lee County Schools. I have dreams of Lehigh having the dance team. I mean, I have all kinds of dreams of bringing things to students, so, and I admire you all for coming out. I always say, fight for what you believe in. If you believe in something stronger, fight for it. Don't never, don't never go away and say, well, I didn't fight for it. And for the, I don't know if there's any teachers here that were left that are, that were recognized, not. That says something very strong about you, that your peers vote you to be Teacher of the Year. And Karen Williams is going to go represent us, and I think she will do that well. So that's, you know, you, teachers have a big, big job, very big job. You know, I'm a mail carrier. If I misdeliver somebody's mail, it's not good, but, you know, it's not going to affect anybody that bad. But when you leave, when a child, when a child leaves, here, I've always said this, and I had a lot of, a lot of, a lot of dreams as a teacher. And I respect teachers, and I think teachers are a breed of their own. But when you leave a school, you have one or two memories of a teacher that you've had. It's either good or it's bad. You know, so, you know, we, we got to remember that. And most of the time, a teacher spends more time with a child than their parents do, more so nowadays than, than before. So, you know, we, we've got a lot to consider, and we've, we've got some healing to do and, and some, some bright choices to make. And I hope that we can all come together and do, do the right thing. And thank you all for coming out. You know, I know you all can be home on your video games or your phones or whatever, but you chose to be here and look at us, scary bunch.
I agree with Ms. Van, and I also want to thank all the teachers of the year for their hard work and dedication. She talked about things for students. It's been, I can't tell you when, since a kid passed Jonesville Middle School, one that way has had an instrument in their hand up until last year that I can remember. Edie Dell's never had a band. We done that last year, free with them. And Thomas Walker's still a work in progress. It's a high school. We don't have a band. We don't have majorities. We'd love to. And nobody wants to take anything from anybody up here. I can promise you that. We do have a band director, and we're working toward all that. And I do want to thank all of you all coming out tonight and speaking.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to thank Mr. Bottom, I think he left, but for bringing up the autism awareness. And I think the more it's talked about, the more people realize how close at home it, it hits. And I would like to certainly see us pursue the century rooms and the cost of some of that as a board sooner than later.
Any other board comments? If not, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel Code of Virginia two point two dash three seven one one A one to discuss student discipline, Code of Virginia two point two dash three seven one one A two. A request to release a student from compulsory attendance pursuant to the Code of Virginia two two point one dash two five four B one. It's released from that compulsory attendance, Code of Virginia two two point one dash two five four B one. And to discuss pending and threatened litigation, Code of Virginia two point two dash three seven one one A seven.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're now in closed session.